Okay, I want to welcome everybody tonight. So if we could go ahead and stand for the prayer and the pledge allegiance of the flag.
God of grace, we humbly beg for your sustaining hand, especially for those stressed by living from paycheck to paycheck, burdened by rising prices or supply chain issues. You have taught us that suffering produces endurance, and endurance produces character, and character produces hope, and hope does not disappoint us because your love has been poured into our hearts. Sustain us with that hope and make us your hands in this community to inspire that hope in our neighbors and citizens. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Leisher. Appreciate it. Okay, all right, let's get started on the agenda. The agenda is before us on June fourteenth, okay? We've took a look at the agenda. Are there any additions, deletions, or corrections to the agenda? Okay, hearing none, on the chair it moves that the agenda be accepted as unanimous consent. Next up is going to be the minutes from May 24th and June 7th. The councils have a chance to take a look at it. Are there any additions, deletions, or corrections to the minutes? Okay, good. Okay, hearing none, the chair moves that the minutes be accepted as unanimous consent. Okay, next up is going to be the dispersments for June 14th. The council has had that in front of them. Is there any additions, deletions, or corrections to that? Okay, hearing none, the chair moves that the dispersments be accepted as unanimous consent. Okay, so next on the agenda here is the introduction of a number of resolutions. And Madam Secretary, could you go ahead and start on these, please? Read the first one.
A resolution to amend the Talbot County Comprehensive Water and Sewer Plan for the purpose of adding or modifying the Talbot County Capital Project for fiscal years 2023 and 2024 to add a new capital project in the amount of $1.5 million for the construction of a new south well for the town of Easton.
Okay, thank you, Madam Secretary. Ray, you want to come on up? Yeah? Go ahead and just explain a little bit of this resolution to us.
Sure thing. This is a capital project for the town of Easton, as it notes here, to replace the south well. One of the things that the town is trying to do at this point in time is secure funding through the Maryland Department of the Environment. So one of the things they have to do is actually have the Comp Wars Sewer Plan amended for that project. So they came forward with their request to amend the Comp Wars Sewer Plan to add this capital project.
Okay, thank you, Ray. Council, any discussion on this? Okay, raise the hands if we want to introduce this resolution. Madam Secretary, could you please announce the number in the public hearing, the date and the time, please?
Yes, this will be known as Resolution Number 330, and the public hearing will be on Tuesday, July 12th at 6:30 PM.
Okay, great. Okay, Madam Secretary, you want to read the next one, please?
A resolution to amend the Talbot County Comprehensive Water and Sewer Plan for the purpose of reclassifying and remapping two parcels of real property located at 29659 Mathews Town Road, Maryland Route 328, Easton, Maryland, shown on Tax Map 26 as parcel 45 and located on Comex Street, Easton, Maryland, shown as Tax Map 26, on Tax Map 26 as parcel 186, from W2 and S2 Planned Water and Sewer Service in three to five years to W1 and S1 Immediate Priority Status.
Okay, Ray, you will come on up.
Counsel, this is a project that was originally, I guess, looked at as part of the Mathews Town Run subdivision. In that, the Mathews Town Run subdivision, a portion of that subdivision was classified as S1 and W1, and then ultimately, this portion of land was actually classified as S2W2. So my understanding, that land has been, I guess, sold off to another developer, and so now the town, or the developer is seeking to reclassify what we refer to as, I guess, a future planned area for water and sewer service within the town of Easton to be brought into the S1 and W1 area. It will consist of about 200 houses. In addition, the other parcel that's identified here is also kind of an L-shaped parcel that's actually owned by the town of Easton. So we're also bringing that parcel into the sewer service area in the event they ever decide to do some kind of water indoor, or I'm sorry, some kind of restroom facility at that park, so.
Okay.
Ray, I think we have a picture of the developer that should be coming on.
Yeah, but I put it in where?
I think we might go through, you have a map, Jessica, you have it good.
We can both see. That was not on there. This is just the concept plan, yes.
So we don't need to believe you'd see that, we need to actually see what Exhibit A shows, the current and the proposed.
Correct. Right now, this, the development area here, yeah.
That's not any good.
And what is the portion that is owned by the town of Easton that would be included in this?
Actually, you can see, kind of like that, if you look at where the community park area is, there's a section of that parcel just next to that, let's say to the south, or...
Okay.
That's actually owned by the town. So my understanding is, I guess it would be a continuation of that park into that, what they're showing is community park area being passive and active. It would just be a continuation of that also being as S1, W1.
Got it.
But currently, where the tree lines are shown there, and it kind of notches out, we would be bringing that portion of that town property, a straight line across, would also be S1W1. And it's kind of, you know, to make it easier, where it says Green Alley Row, it's kind of just that little, you know, polygon right there, that white polygon that's outside that community park area.
Okay.
For the L-shaped part, the part 186, that's the town part?
Yes, sir.
Okay, probably that L-shaped.
Okay, any other questions?
Actually, there was some discussion in the packet about the notification to the Swan Haven Road residents, and has that in fact been accomplished?
Yes, and during the process, just so the council's aware, one of the questions that was raised prior to them moving forward with the Comp Wars Sewer Plan Amendment was they are looking at having, I guess, an access off of the Mathews Town Road. In addition to that, they wanted an access off of Swan Haven. So it's, whoops, where you're kind of seeing, I guess, is kind of over on the right, you'll see kind of the tan properties that kind of arc down, and then ultimately, you see kind of a little stubout that kind of leaves the screen. That stubout would be an access road off of Swan Haven, or onto Swan Haven Road. So it's that portion right there. And so they were looking at having that alternative access point that would also discharge out onto Swan Haven. We are currently in the process of, one, we were requesting that the developer, you know, part of the, I guess, the planning and zoning requirements is that they need to notify the neighboring property owners. We just wanted to confirm that all the property owners on Swan Haven have been notified of the potential increase in road traffic onto their road. At the same time, in accordance with the Talbot County Code, they need to get a permission from the county to basically connect that development into the town, or I'm sorry, into the county, into a county road system.
Ray, how long has this parcel been S2W2?
Oh, it's been a while. I would say at least maybe 15, no, over 15 years.
So they already exceeded that three to five years?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
What's the plan in the development there?
What's that?
What's the plan in the development?
My understanding, they're talking 200 houses.
Any other questions, counsel?
I have no other questions.
Raise the hands. Introduce. Madam Secretary.
A resolution...
Before you read that bill number out, so this is just introduction of resolutions, right?
That's it, yeah.
Can I withdraw that and have some more time on this? And I can bring it back if I want to?
I'm sure you can.
I was the only one.
Yes, as soon as we introduce it, I'm assuming that Patrick, you can tell us, it just goes to the Planning Commission.
Right, so introduction would move this forward to the Planning Commission and the Public Works Advisory Board.
Yeah, so there's a lot of hoops that got to go through before we vote and it comes back to us.
And I was the only one, though, Ray, introducing.
Yes.
So, yeah, I'd like to withdraw that at this time. Is that okay? Is that, can I do that?
It won't be introduced, which means, yeah, because it's not a, well, depending what happens with the other one we have tonight, it would have to wait till the next, till September.
Go ahead, Ray.
Yeah, I think what they're discussing, under the amendment procedures, the county council currently would receive applications to amend the Comp Wars Sewer Plan once a quarter. At this point in time, it would be the first legislative day of June. If it were not introduced today, I would anticipate that it would have to wait until September, the first legislative day in September to be reintroduced.
So, Ray, so what you're saying here, and you've explained to us what's happening here, what's, dig into the weeds wouldn't help me understand a little bit more. The development's going to take place, correct?
Well, in all honesty, they need to move forward with the Comp Wars Sewer Plan Amendment.
Okay.
What I would say at this point in time, this parcel or this land is actually within the town boundaries of the town of Easton. So this is basically, they're seeking to amend the Comp Wars Sewer Plan to reclassify that S2 and W2 area to bring in those parcels, or that parcel, to basically become immediate priority status for water and sewer service. So once they've done that, they would then basically, you know, once the council has, let's say, introduced it, then that would go to the Planning Commission and to the Public Works Advisory Board for review and recommendation to the county council. With Planning Commission, it also means that the Planning Commission needs to review the comp plan and make sure that the proposed development is consistent with the comp plan. At that point in time, if the council chose during the public hearing or after the public hearing, the council then would put it to a vote for adopting resolution, whatever that number might be, amending the Comp Wars Sewer Plan. If the council chose not to adopt that, then that applicant would have to wait two years for the next application date, or next time they could apply. So, you know, I guess the key would be is that, from my standpoint, if you're looking at delaying this, it would probably have to be delayed until September if you don't introduce it tonight. I know that the applicant, which is the developer, has requested to have this introduced, you know, and they did submit their application to do that. But again, this is at the pleasure of the council, I would say.
So would this affect the growth allocation needed in the town?
This is not, this really would only be for dealing with the Comp Wars Sewer Plan Amendment. I don't, I can't really tell you it would be associated with growth allocation. If there's growth allocation, it would be part of this.
Yeah. So, the council obviously is a little bit uneased about this, so it would, so back to you, Patrick, even though it moves forward, it's going to go through the process, we'll make sure everybody goes through the process, and it doesn't look like we're okay in the project.
Correct. You're just saying we're going to, somebody wants to move this forward, and then, like Ray said, it's going to have to go to the Planning Commission, there's going to be a public hearing, the opportunity for public comment, and presumably, the attorney for the developers, Zach Smith, will present and be able to answer more questions, and then there'll also have to be a hearing in front of council, and again, they'll have the opportunity to present and answer any questions and any concerns you might have.
Okay, well, I'm okay with that.
Yeah, and to answer Mr. Pax's question more clearly, MDE approved Resolution 131 in October of 2006 that reclassified this as S2W2.
Okay.
And has any of this gone in front of the town of Easton?
To my knowledge, yes, sir. Yes, this has gone through the Planning Commission for the town of Easton, and now they're now seeking the Comp Wars Sewer Plan Amendment at this point.
I'm a little bit more comfortable is what I'm hearing.
Yeah, if the town's on board, then I'll hear it through, so.
And as part of that application, I apologize for not mentioning it to the county council, as part of this application, we do request that the town support this. So the town has submitted a letter supporting this application.
Oh, okay, good, yeah, but that's, yeah, okay, thank you, Ray, I appreciate that.
Could you call again for the show of hands for the support?
Yeah, okay, yeah.
This will be known as Resolution Number 331. The public hearing will be on Tuesday, July 12th at 6:30.
Okay.
A resolution to place questions on the ballot at the 2022 general election to amend Section 207 of the Charter of Talbot County to increase the compensation of the county council from $14,400 per annum to $25,000 per annum, with the council president to receive an additional $1,000 per annum, and to provide that the council may set by resolution compensation of council members and the president of the council differing from that set forth in Section 207. Provided, however, that such resolution shall require at least a four-fifths vote of the council, be adopted prior to the next general election for the office of council member, and take effect commencing with the forthcoming council term.
Mr. Thomas, you want to go through that with a slow pace?
Sure, do we want to...
For the public to understand.
Is Councilman Price going to join us?
It's not indicated she's ready.
Okay, do we want to wait until...
I'll introduce.
Okay, so just to, yeah, just to briefly explain, this was requested by Councilmember Price, and it really does two things. So one would be, and of course, because this is a charter amendment, if the council ultimately adopts this, it has to go to the ballot, and will be decided by the voters at the next election. So it really does two things. It increases the county council compensation from $14,400 to $25,000, beginning with the council that would take office this year. And then it would also give that council the authority to set different compensation by resolution for the council taking office beginning in 2026. So there's two aspects to it. And that, there are other counties that do that, they don't specify an amount of the salary in their charter, they'll say, the council has to set by resolution the compensation for the next succeeding council, so it gives the council some additional flexibility without having to do charter amendments every time they might wish to change the salary.
Right, right.
How do you put a price tag on this much fun?
Well, how about the president?
I know.
So, Mr. Pax?
This has been, this was last adjusted in 2002, is that correct?
I believe that's correct, and there was an amendment to increase it to roughly $16,000, I think, at the last election, and it didn't pass.
Right, right. And I will say a little bit about this. I mean, when I first, when I first thought about running for council, and I'll be totally honest with everybody, I didn't even realize you got paid at all until I started really getting into it and understood that we were going to be making $14,000, so. I understand what Mrs. Price is talking about, you know, council, council spends a lot, a lot of time here, and the compensation is fine, the $14,000, $15,000, but, you know, me personally, I'm not in this seat for the money. I'm, I just, you know, I don't know if I sort of agree with it or not, I think it is up to the public to decide, you know, if we move forward with this and it goes on the ballot, I could take it or leave it, but I will still want to do this job, that's for sure, and I want everybody to understand that because it's a hard job. But you have to really love doing this, and it's, the money is a little bit of a bonus because of us spending so much time here. But I just really, me personally, it's just hard to, it's hard to, it's really hard to put a really salary and a price on what we're really doing here, you know? So that's my sort of two cents on that. Any other councils want to speak about it?
Well, you know, this, whatever we do here, I'm not sure that $25,000 is necessarily the right amount. You know, I don't think anybody up here is doing this for the compensation. That said, that said, is there, does council compensation actually, effectively, the local compensation bar some people from actually considering doing this?
Right.
This public service is, would be my only thought. I wonder whether $25,000 is the right amount. It does seem like a significant jump over the $14,400, but presumably, that could be adjusted by amendment before we move forward with this.
Yeah, right. Were you thinking more?
No, I was not thinking more.
Okay.
All right. But I think it might be, and I know that we've taken a preliminary look, and it might be appropriate for us to look at what Caroline Dorchester, Queen Anne's, are doing with the council.
All right, so, you know, let's put it in the board's hands, yep. Move forward, yep.
Show hands.
Yep.
This will be known as Resolution Number 332, and the public hearing will be on Tuesday, July 12th at 6:30 PM.
Okay, sounds good, thank you. Thank you, counsel. Good discussion on me, that's for sure. Okay, the next thing up in the agenda here is the public hearing on FY23 Community Development Block Grant Project. Wait, hold on, that's it? That's it. Ms. Mary Kay's going to help us with this?
Yes, thank you.
Yep, welcome.
Thank you very much. Good evening to all. In May, we came before you and presented two projects to the council for consideration for FY23 Community Development Block Grant Funding Cycle, and the council voted to partner with both Habitat for Humanity Chop Tank and with Building African American Minds, BAM. The first project before you this evening for a public hearing is Habitat Chop Tank. Since 1992, Habitat Chop Tank has empowered 97 low-income families to build strength, stability, and self-reliance through affordable home ownership. Habitat Chop Tank has a strong base of support in our community, most recently working in partnership with the HCD, Talbot County, and using CDBG funds to construct affordable homes in the Brooks Lane-St. Michael's area. The current project will address unmet low-income housing needs by creating affordable housing ownership opportunities in the historic area of Easton known as the Hill. The funding request for $100,000 will support the rising cost of construction, material, and labor associated with the rehabilitation of a single-family home located at 122 South Locust Lane. Habitat Chop Tank will begin building four modular homes on Prospect Street in Easton and five new homes in the Hill District of Easton later this year. In addition to these newly constructed homes, another strategy for creating quality and affordable housing is to rehabilitate existing homes and abandoned and dilapidated properties while at a greater cost than building a new home. Rehabilitating a historic home, particularly a home in the Hill District of Easton, is a demonstration of the community's commitment to its rich and vibrant history. The applicants have been posted on our webpage for the past week now, and we welcome public comment this evening. I believe there are representatives from Habitat Chop Tank here with us this evening. If you have additional questions, I'm sure they can help to answer those questions.
Okay. Thank you, Mary Kay, I appreciate it. So, are you, you guys want to come up from Habitat? Welcome, guys.
Thank you for having us.
Yeah, yeah, appreciate it.
My name is Wayne Suggs, I'm the Director of Construction for Habitat Chop Tank.
I'm John Pivzar, Critical Home Repair and Rehab Manager for Chop Tank.
Good.
Habitat.
It's a mouthful. So, anyway, the CDBG grant would be used to rehabilitate the home at 122 South Locust, which currently has a tree growing through it, and part of, most of its roof still there, but we would be completely renovating this home, lift it up, put a new foundation underneath it, put a new floor system in, put the house back on it, condition crawl space, and then bring it up to basically new construction standards, energy efficiency. And we got the approval for the scope of work from the historic, Easton Historic Trust last night at their meeting, so they signed off on the materials and all of those things. So now it's just a matter of trying to get enough money to rehab the house, which is easily twice the cost of building the other five houses that we're building from scratch in the Hill.
Okay, that sounds great.
Well, I want to commend Habitat Chop Tank for doing this, greater degree of difficulty to work within the historic district, to work on rehabilitation of an existing, of existing housing stock rather than simply building new on fresh dirt. That kind of commitment to the community and to the character of the community in which you're building is something that, I mean, Habitat's come a long way, and really, I've been to your most, your two most recent home dedications, which granted, both of those were new builds, but they're in the community, they're in character with the community. You're to be commended for what you're doing, and this is a really terrific project, and I'm thrilled that we can help channel some of this block grant funding to make this, to make this financially work for the project.
I'm thrilled that you can as well.
Is the $100,000, is that the only money going towards this project, or do you have money coming from?
It's about a $400,000 construction project. I know that at least $200,000 of that will be out of Habitat Chop Tank's operating funds. I think there was some, and again, I don't want to go on the record with exact numbers because I'm not the grant guy, I'm just a construction guy, but I think there were some legacy funds that were left over, and I think part of the funding would be from the legacy grant, and then with this, would be close to half of the cost, and then we would fit the bill for whatever's left.
Okay, good. Mr. Pax? Good. Mr. Pack?
Well, certainly, as Ms. Lesher said, I commend you for taking this on. It'd probably be cheaper just to knock the house down and rebuild it on, on the ground.
Much cheaper.
Yeah, yeah, much cheaper. So, but, and keeping with the historical aesthetics of the neighborhood, I can understand why you're trying to do that. Same footprint, you're not widening the home in any way?
It'll be the same framing, so it'll be exactly the same.
Same footprint, okay. Well, great. You know, again, I've been supportive of Habitat over the years. The project you all did down in St. Michael's with the property right behind, lost track of my name, right behind the Douglas School.
Brooks Lane.
Brooks Lane, thank you.
Yes, sir.
And I remember when I first toured that with Ray several, several years ago, it was underwater. And I said to Ray, "Are they sure they want to do this?" So, well, congratulations to you on this project.
Well, thank you very much. Have you been down to Brooks Lane?
I have. I went down for the dedication of one of the homeowners down there about a year ago, before, I think before COVID hit. Gosh, I can't think of his name now. Small blue house down in Brooks Lane. But you guys did a wonderful job because when I first went down there, it was clearly underwater. And I said, "I don't know how they're going to do this," but you did it. So, great work.
We're very proud of that project, and we definitely could not have done it without CDBG help from the county that basically paid for all of the infrastructure to get all the seven lots on that side of the road ready, and the cooperation with Ray who got tired of my calls at the end.
There was a, there was a carvert issue there. I think there was a carvert they had backed up where onto a person's property. There was a.
There were more than one issue there.
It was causing flooding. There was a burned infiltration pond, I think, something back there. It was flooding out. It was a host of problems, but you guys managed it. So, God bless you on that.
Thank you very much.
Okay, guys. We appreciate it.
All right.
We appreciate everything you do.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
You need to show a hand for introducing this.
Hey, unanimous?
I'm sorry. I didn't have a public hearing yet. I'm sorry, I'm heading myself.
I didn't, I, yeah, I was wondering.
You didn't have a public hearing yet, okay.
Sorry. It's a rookie mistake, the woman. Okay. Up next is the bill for the BAM. You guys want to come on up?
Ray?
Yeah, look at Mary Kay.
We might want to grab them. We, we'll wait. Grab them.
Yeah.
Not that I think anything is going to change, you might want to grab them.
So, just a real quick review of the project.
Yeah.
Founded in two thousand and five, Building African American Minds, BAM, is a nonprofit organization that has been providing after-school and summer programs to area youth and various services to their families. The plans are to demolish the existing fourteen hundred and forty square foot two-story building and replace it with a state-of-the-art three-story two-hundred, two thousand four hundred square foot academic center located at thirty-one Joe White Street here in Easton. The interior space will include administrative and facility offices, commercial kitchen, dining room, library, eleven classrooms, student and teacher lounges, wellness and counseling center, computer lab, conference, and conference rooms. And will also have a rooftop solar array that will supplement their electricity needs. The CDBG request is for three hundred and forty-seven thousand, one hundred and thirty-eight dollars, and this is a small portion of the nearly seven million dollars of the overall project total. BAM will continue to provide after and summer school programs and expand to new services that will include workforce development programming for youth ages eighteen to twenty-five, services to parents and community members such as financial literacy workshops, job skills, behavioral health services, parenting education training, as well as other program services. With a facility dedicated to BAM's academic programs, the organization will be able to increase its services, thereby increasing its impact in the community. The addition of the academic center will double the number of BAM students program participants to approximately one hundred and thirty, while increasing its outreach to the public, to the adult population with the addition of workforce development services. It is anticipated that the academic center will provide the necessary space for resources and services to serve upward of four hundred to five hundred adults in a historically underserved community. Before I ask you, have them come up and speak, I would like to just say a thank you, a huge thank you to the representatives from both of these organizations, getting this application together. That is over a hundred pages for each application, the amount of information that we needed to share with one another. They were always extremely responsive and very helpful to get me the information I needed and, you know, bounce ideas back and forth on how to include certain information in the application. So, I'm very thankful for their willingness to participate and to help us get these applications completed, and just want to make sure that I had a chance to say that before.
Thank you.
I step away from the microphone.
Yeah, okay.
All right. Thank you.
Good evening. Good evening.
I'm Deena Daly. I'm the co-founder and executive director of Building African American Minds. And with me tonight, I have my student Malcolm Richards, who's doing an internship for the summer. He's a rising senior at Bowie State and Morgan State. Why?
I'm from Bowie.
Yes, from Bowie, but Morgan State. Yesterday, we had a Bowie student going, so my mind is still relaying yesterday's event. So, apologize, Malcolm. But yes, I'm welcome any questions you may have regarding my project. Thank you for having me tonight.
Yeah, no problem.
I just want to congratulate you on the recognition received by BAM, and this is an exciting next step for the organization, and I'm thrilled that we can be here to help this, help move this forward.
Thank you.
Thank you for answering some questions that I had today. I, in today's world, it just, it seems strange to me to have a facility built for one race and just for men, just for boys. And so, I always try to think about bringing the community together to benefit all and one another. So, I reached out, knowing that this is an educational facility, and in the grant, there's a lot of great information where they, where there are some plans to partner with Chesapeake College. So, I reached out to Dr. Cliff Coppersmith up at Chesapeake College, and I said, "Help me get over that hump, you know? Just give me some information and let's share some ideas and talk." And one of the things that came out of it, which really surprised me, I never would have known, but at Chesapeake College, their four-credit enrollment for the fall is sixty-seven percent women. And across the country, they're seeing a very steep slide in men not going to college and not extending their academics. And so, knowing that you are trying to set up a program that will allow individuals, just the first step, to get the GED, as well as then to partner, because I love Chesapeake College, all the programs that they have, they benefit all five counties, and there's just no other way to provide that service than what's being provided. And so, hearing an individual that I think very highly of in that field speak highly of you certainly got me over the hump and any concerns that I had. So, I'm glad to see the partnerships that you're making, and they are valuable, and they're showing. So, the work that you've already started is, is growing, and I'm very impressed.
Well, we did start a girls' program, so we heard from the community and our families as well. And this past year, we started a first-grade program for our girls, and we're adding, just like we did with the boys, we'll add a class each year. So, in the summer, we'll have arising first graders and the girls who just finished first grade going into second grade. So, we do try to meet what the community needs are and hear from our parents and partners like Chesapeake College. I also sit on a committee at Chesapeake College, so I know Dr. Coppersmith very well. That is the reason why we're here and helping the youth in our community and to expand. We do serve predominantly African-American students, but it's open to all. And we have on occasion had other youth participate and asked to be part of our programming. So, it may not happen all the time, but if they choose to register, they're, they're youth, we did not turn them down. So, just because we're targeting a specific population that we know statistically is doing worse than any other group, it does not mean that if a student, your student, wants to join us that we would turn them away.
That's great.
Thank you.
Mr. Pack?
I'm good. Support it. I think anytime we can add to our students' learning capacity, we should take advantage of it. So, this is quite, quite the endeavor, quite a bold endeavor. But again, you know, BAM has taken on challenges like this in the past, and it seemed to rise to the occasion. So, I don't, I don't have any doubt that this will not be one that they want to achieve. And, you know, when it comes to programs that deal with closing the achievement gap, and I remember going back twenty years ago, talking to Derek about this, this idea, which was the concept behind BAM, which is how to close the achievement gap in Talbot County Public Schools, when it comes primarily to African-American males. They used to be called Building African American Males, and then the name changed. So, but, you know, we have yet work to do in that, in that, in that realm. So, and I think that they're just trying to make sure that they check all the boxes and give these students the best chance they possibly can. So.
Thank you, Mr. Pack. I would agree a hundred percent, and yesterday's event was great, and very proud to be there. And it was, it was special with you and Derek, too.
Thank you very much.
And the whole family, you know? So, but, yep, we all support it, so we look forward to it.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Okay. Okay, Madam Secretary. All right. Okay, we have introduction of administrative resolutions.
Are we going to consider those two as our public hearing? Right?
We got to close it, I guess, first.
Yeah. I guess anyone else wants to speak on either?
Yeah. Anybody else like to speak?
I'm going to close.
Okay. Madam Secretary, we'll close, close the public hearing.
I just wanted to add one quick thing in response to Mr. Davilio's question. For the Habitat, they're asking for the hundred thousand through CDBG, but Habitat is providing a hundred and ninety-one thousand dollars, and they have a hundred and nineteen thousand through community legacy and other grant opportunities. And in regard to the BAM project, they're asking for the three hundred and forty-seven thousand, but they have three-point, approximately three point three million in donations, and then three point three million through other grant opportunities.
Okay. Great. Thank you. That's great.
Do you want me to read each administrative resolution which pertains to the BAM and Habitat?
Let's read those. Yeah.
Habitat was first.
Yeah. Right.
Whereas, the state of Maryland through the Department of Housing and Community Development has solicited applications from eligible jurisdictions to apply for funding under the Maryland Community Development Block Grant CDBG Program, and whereas Talbot County is eligible to apply for funds from the Maryland Community Development Block Grant Program through the Maryland Department of Housing and Community Development, and whereas the Talbot County Council held the required public hearing related to the formulation of the Community Development Block Grant Application on June fourteenth, two thousand twenty-two, and whereas the Talbot County Council understands and acknowledges that they would be responsible for the completion of grant activities and any corrective actions, including the repayment of funds if necessary. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Talbot County Council hereby authorizes the submittal of an application for Community Development Block Grant Funds in the amount of one hundred thousand dollars for Habitat for Humanity Chop Tank to support the rising cost of construction, material, and labor associated with the rehabilitation of a home located in the historic area of Easton at one twenty-two South Locust Lane, Easton, Maryland. Be it further resolved that the Talbot County Manager is authorized and empowered to execute any and all documents required for the submission of the application, given under our hands and the great seal of Talbot County this fourteenth day of June in the year of our Lord, two thousand and twenty-two. And do you want me to read all of the other one?
Yeah, sure.
Or just, or, yes, vote on this one?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, good.
You want to take the first one?
Need to introduce it, right?
We'll do some vote on it, on the first one.
Okay.
Show of hands for those introducing first.
Show of hands, yep.
Mr. President, this, as this is an administrative resolution, this eligible for vote this evening, I would ask the council that we move this to final vote this evening.
I'll second that.
Madam Secretary, got a motion to second to move it to vote?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. Davilio?
Aye.
Mr. Lesher?
Aye.
Mr. Pack?
Aye.
Okay. Whereas, the state of Maryland through the Department of Housing and Community Development has solicited applications from eligible jurisdictions to apply for funding under the Maryland Community Development Block Grant CDBG Program, and whereas Talbot County is eligible to apply for funds, funds from the Maryland Community Development Block Grant Program through the Maryland Department of Housing and Community Development, and whereas the Talbot County Council held the required public hearing related to the formulation of the Community Development Block Grant Application on June fourteenth, two thousand twenty-two, and whereas the Talbot County Council understands and acknowledges that they would be responsible for the completion of grant activities and any corrective actions, including the repayment of funds if necessary. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Talbot County Council authorizes the submittal of an application for Community Development Block Grant Funds in the amount of three hundred and forty-seven thousand, one hundred and thirty-eight dollars for the Building African American Minds, BAM, Academic Center Construction Project loaded, located at thirty-one Joe White Street, Easton, Maryland, two one six zero one. The main objectives of BAM's programs are after-school, summer childcare program, an educational program for youth, parents, and the community in areas such as financial literacy and budgeting, job skills enhancement training, GED courses, and wellness and arts programming, serving a predominantly low-to-moderate income area. Be it further resolved that the Talbot County Manager is authorized and empowered to execute any and all documents required for the submission of the application, given under our hands and the great seal of Talbot County this fourteenth day of June in the year of our Lord, two thousand and twenty-two.
Okay, council, show of hands.
Mr. Council President, as this is an administrative resolution, this eligible for vote this evening, I would ask the council that we move this to vote.
I'll second.
Okay. We got a motion to second, Madam Secretary. Could you call the vote?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. Davilio?
Aye.
Mr. Lesher?
Aye.
Mr. Pack?
Aye.
Okay.
Thank you. The CDBG process is a, is a competitive process, so we will forward these applications, and we wish them both the best of luck.
Okay. Sounds great. Good job, Mary Kay. Appreciate you helping.
Congratulations, good luck to both of you.
Yep.
Thank you.
Okay. We'll move on to the public hearing. So, Madam Secretary, you want to read the bill into the record?
Bill Number Fourteen Ninety-nine, a bill to amend Chapter Fifty-Six Electrical Standards of the Talbot County Code for the purposes of incorporating amendments to the Maryland Electricians Act enacted by the Maryland General Assembly pursuant to Senate Bill Seven Sixty-Two, Chapter Seven Oh Eight, Acts of Two Thousand Twenty-One, and incorporating the National Electrical Code as updated from time to time as the minimum standard for electrical work in Talbot County, Maryland.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. So, this is a public hearing, so I'm going to open it. So, you have three minutes as an individual. If you want to speak for an organization, I'll give you five minutes. So, we'll go ahead and open the floor here to my left if anybody on the left here wants to speak about Fourteen Ninety-nine. Okay? You guys want to come up here and talk about Fourteen Ninety-nine? Okay. So, I guess at this time, we don't have anybody that's. So I guess at this time, we don't have anybody that's coming up here, so.
Close the public hearing.
Yeah. Would you want to keep the public hearing open? Or can we go ahead and?
This is the second reader of the bill. You can move the third reader.
Correct.
Can we move to?
Can we move the third reader?
Yes.
Okay.
Buy a vote. You have to make a vote because the rules require you would do it at a separate meeting. So you'd be voting to waive the requirement that the third reader be held at a separate meeting.
And is there a reason to wait? Can we move on this tonight?
Sure.
I'm comfortable moving forward.
Okay. I'm fine with it.
Mr. President, as this is a numbered bill, it has to be moved the third reader.
Right.
If there's no objection of counsel, I would ask that Bill 1499 be moved the third reader.
I'll second.
Okay. Madam Secretary, could we move this to third reader, please?
Bill number 1499, a bill to amend.
Mr. President, I would ask that so it must be considered reading of the bill.
Okay.
Thank you, Ms. President.
There's no objection?
Yeah.
The matter is done before council will vote, Mr. President.
Okay. Is there a motion? Do we need a motion?
I think you can just call for the vote.
Okay, you just call for the vote, okay. Madam Secretary, could you call the vote, please?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. DeVilleo?
Aye.
Mr. Lesher?
Aye.
Mr. Pack?
Aye.
Okay. Sounds great. Madam Secretary, would you like to go ahead and read Bill 1500, please?
Bill number 1500, a bill to amend Chapter 60 Ethics Provisions of the Talbot County Code for the purposes of incorporating amendments enacted by the Maryland General Assembly pursuant to House Bill 879, Chapter 31, Acts of 2017, House Bill 363, Chapter 252, Acts of 2021, and House Bill 1058, Chapter 425, Acts of 2021, and providing that the members of certain county boards, commissions, and committees shall be subject to Chapter 60 as non-elected officials.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Madam Secretary. Since this is a public hearing, I'll open it to the floor. If anybody wants to talk, individual for three minutes, and then organization for five minutes. So I'm going to open the floor up here to the left. If anybody wants to talk to about 1500. Your to my right, your body. Okay. Is this another one that's eligible?
Well, we've got to close the public hearing.
Okay, okay. So I guess we'll go ahead and close the public hearing.
Mr. Callahan, before we proceed, if I may.
Yeah, sure.
If I may turn to Mr. Thomas, just for some, just a bit more explanation on 1500.
Okay.
You know, we started this process dealing with the Police Accountability Board, and that had to be incorporated into this ethics code. But while we were looking at that, we noticed that there were a number of other boards under the county council's purview that we felt that also needed to be covered under the ethics code for various reasons. Some of those boards dealt with direct lease. There were being dealt with out at the airport. Some dealt with certain rulings of whether or not a person could enter into a license with the county under the Short Term Rental Review Board. And so we wanted to make sure that we included those boards and committees also underneath this umbrella. And if I could have Mr. Thomas take a moment to speak to that before we move into any other direction.
Sure.
Sure. So currently, in addition to the county manager, county attorney, department heads, the code compliance officer, the alcoholic beverages inspector, the filing boards and commissions are also subject, are defined as non-elected officials in the ethics code. The Electrical Board, the Board of Appeals, and the Planning Commission. As Councilmember Pack mentioned, under the state law, which required us to have a police accountability board and administrative charging committee, those boards are also required by the state law to be subject to the ethics code. So as a part of the process of amending the code, we looked at the other boards and commissions that it made sense to include under the ethics code. So that adds the Agricultural Resolution Board, the Ethics Commission, the Golf Board, the Airport Board, the Historic Preservation Commission, the Public Works Advisory Board, Short Term Rental Review Board, the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board, and then the, as I mentioned, the Accountability Board and the Administrative Charging Committee.
Okay.
And then it also makes other changes that are required by state law
Right.
on ethics provisions generally.
Mr. DeVilleo?
I would like to just say, I really appreciate Mr. Pack and Mr. Thomas working together on this. Obviously, in Talbot County, you can run around and tell everybody you have integrity when you have none. But with this, it takes ethics to be on any of these boards and commissions. And there are times when all of us have had to recuse ourselves, as well as individuals on these boards. And because we're a small town, it is a small community. We all do know one another, and we try to take care of one another. And so it is very important to me that all boards and commissions are included in this ethics and practice it. You know, it's one of those things that when you step up to take a leadership role, you're no longer just that person that can sit back and write letters to the editor and lie and commit fraud and admit to it in court and then still tell everybody that you're an upstanding citizen. You're not. These are the individuals who step up, deserve our respect and our admiration for doing so. And as well as they have to prove it. And so I'm glad that we are including everyone in this. And I just want to take the time to say thank you to all those individuals. When you look at the number of boards and committees that we work with, who advise us, that is a very large crosscut of the community. It's a very diverse group, and it's a lot of individuals. And there's absolutely no way I could do it without them. There's just way too much for any of us to know and be experts on. And so these individuals are, in my opinion, the ones who've stepped up and deserve the most respect out of the community.
And if I may, Mr. Callahan.
Good.
And just want to add, because we are a small community and number, you could add an individual who may sit on one board but also be a part of another association, which may be in litigation with the county or with a particular project. And we want to make sure that we are above board in our dealings. You know, we don't want those advisory boards and those commissions that report to this body in any way feeling that they're not operating in an ethical manner. And so just for, to be, for full disclosure, for transparency, we felt it was prudent to put those boards and commissions in underneath this bill so that those members could be advised by council, could be advised by the department here to say, look, you know, we feel that there's an ethical clause here, and you need to recuse yourself from discussion on that. As many of us have done many times. I've had to stop following issues dealing with the state when I was employed with the state. Mr. Callahan, I think you stepped up more than anybody on the council over the last, other than probably Mr. Bartlett when he was a member of council.
Yeah.
But we have to do that. And I think it's just to make sure that we keep ourselves above board in our dealings. So that's the whole crux of why we wanted to do this.
Okay. Well, thank you, Mr. Pack. Mr. Lesher?
Oh, I.
Yep. Yep.
Nothing further on this.
Yeah, okay.
I'm glad that we're updating this.
And I would agree with my colleagues, too. It's extremely important being in these seats that, you know, we come across many, 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 and hundreds of decisions and hundreds of projects that come in front of us. And we are a small community. It's very, very hard to do this job. But there's situations you come in that you have to separate yourself and recuse yourself. So I'm glad, Patrick, you and Mr. Pack sort of weeded all that stuff out because it's extremely important to kind of keep everybody even keel. So, okay.
Mr. Chairman, if you don't mind, this is a numbered bill, Bill 1500.
Right.
It has to be moved the third reader in order for us to take a vote on it tonight. If there's no objection, I would ask that Bill 1500 be moved the third reader tonight.
Okay.
I'll second.
We got a motion to second, Madam Secretary. Could you call the vote?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. DeVilleo?
Aye.
Mr. Lesher?
Aye.
Mr. Pack?
Aye.
Okay.
So should we read the title?
Yep.
Bill number 1500, a bill to amend Chapter 60 Ethics Provisions of the Talbot County Code.
I ask that such should be considered a third reading.
No objection.
Okay, Madam Secretary. Could you call the vote, please?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. DeVilleo?
Aye.
Mr. Lesher?
Aye.
Mr. Pack?
Aye.
Okay. Thank you. All right, thank you, counsel. Okay. Next on the list eligible for vote, Madam Secretary, Resolution 328.
Resolution number 328, a resolution to amend the Talbot County Comprehensive Water and Sewer Plan to revise Chapter 3 Amendment Procedures.
Okay. Mr. Thomas, would you help us with that, help everybody understand?
Sure. So this resolution, as initially introduced, would have provided that comprehensive water and sewer plan amendments initiated by the county can be introduced at any legislative day instead of on the first legislative day on a quarterly basis, as it currently stands. It also provided that the application provisions set forth in Chapter 3 of the Comprehensive Water and Sewer Plan don't apply when the county is the one initiating the amendment. Subsequently, the council introduced Amendment Number 1 to this resolution, which deletes the language about the application provisions not applying to the county. So if Amendment Number 1 were adopted, then it would amend Resolution 328 to simply state that amendments initiated by the county may be introduced at any legislative day.
Okay. All right. Discussion?
Well, Mrs. Price isn't here, but I think she's the one that spearheaded this effort. And I will give her credit for that.
Yep.
I think it's needed. You know, the quarterly requirement in order to amend the Comprehensive Water and Sewer Plan could be seen somewhat as laborsome. I mean, we just dealt with Resolution 331 earlier today.
Yeah.
And if we didn't take action on it this evening, it had to be pushed already back to September. We couldn't even put it back on to next month for reconsideration. They had to go back, now it has to go back into September. So, I mean, it just allows council some more flexibility, if you would, to consider those amendments. And so I think on that ground, I certainly would support this.
Okay.
One of the things that I've said from the beginning is that I'm extremely frustrated with the time delays in government. And this is one of those. This is where we can eliminate that delay, allow the applicant to apply at any time, but still have to go through all the same channels, all the same checklist. Just, they don't have that delay of the quarter. So I'm happy to move forward with this. It doesn't do anything but just improve customer service. And as well as, I would assume it's going to speed things up at Brennan's office, that you're not going to have a file just sitting there for two months waiting for that deadline to show up, so. Which gets frustrating, sitting there looking at something that you can't even handle or work yet, so.
I can, just to clarify, this would only affect amendments initiated by the county. It wouldn't affect any other. Because then the problem would become, there could be a problem where every meeting we've got a handful of Comprehensive Water and Sewer Plan resolutions. But sometimes if the county needs to initiate one, they don't have to rush to get it done in order to meet that quarterly deadline or have to punt it, you know, three months. So that was really the idea.
Yeah, I'm still okay with it.
Sorry, I just wanted to clarify that.
So in question to the municipality with Res. 331 that we just handled, that would not fall underneath this purview, although it's be?
No, because that was an applicant. I think it was initiated by the developer.
Okay. Okay.
But we have, we have a, an amendment to this resolution that was recommended to us by the Public Works Advisory Board. We requested that that amendment be drawn up. We have that language in front of us. And so I would, I would introduce, I would offer that amendment at this time before we move the bill to final passage.
Okay.
Mr. Lesher? Mr. Callahan, Mr. DeVilleo, Mrs. Price. And it was introduced on May 10. So it just needs to be voted on.
So it just needs to be voted on?
Right.
Okay. Well, I will move, I will move that Amendment 1 to a vote.
Okay. Is it, I'm going to put, is that, is it a motion?
Yes.
Okay, do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Okay.
And that's Amendment 1, that deletes proposed language in Resolution Number 328, as introduced expressly stating that the application procedures set forth in Chapter 3 of the Comprehensive Water and Sewer Plan do not apply to amendments initiated by the county.
Correct.
So then that will?
It just leaves the language intact. It doesn't. The proposed added language would have the effect of saying that the county is not subject to the application procedures. And as I think Ray mentioned at perhaps the last meeting, the county is in the process of having its plan reviewed with RAO anyway. So that's something that's going to get looked at in the course of that process, so.
Okay.
It'll be addressed at the appropriate time.
Okay. All right. So we've got a motion and second?
Yes.
And this, this language, just for clarification, this, the way that's been reworded here is that the county still goes through all of the same procedures.
Right.
I think that the initial language proposed left some question about whether some of those requirements would be started. This will ensure that they are not.
Okay. Any other questions? Any other discussion?
Ray, just one question for you. As far as the changes to the Comprehensive Water and Sewer Plan, will the state receive those every month? If there's a change that the council has and it doesn't fall within that quarterly timeframe, will the state receive that change in that interim?
What's going to happen, let's say, is the county council is introducing or we're moving for the county. Anytime the county council has adopted a resolution, after the council's adopted that resolution, I would then draft a letter to MDE and forward it to them for their review. So it would, their review would take place at that moment in time for about a 90-day period, would not fall into that quarterly cycle.
So we're now prohibited from sending them up?
No.
Okay, that's fine.
Good, Mr. Pack?
That's good.
Good. Counsel, good. Okay, so we have a motion and second on the floor. Madam Secretary, could you call the vote?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. DeVilleo?
Aye.
Mr. Lesher?
Aye.
Mr. Pack?
Aye.
Okay.
So that amends Resolution 328? And so 328 as amended is now eligible for a vote?
Yes.
Yes.
I'll make a motion that we accept Resolution 328 as amended.
Second.
Okay, Madam Secretary, we got a motion to second that the amendment is ready to be voted on.
Mr. Callahan?
Lesher. Aye.
Mr. DeVilleo?
Aye.
Mr. Lesher?
Aye.
Mr. Pack?
I'm confused.
Are you confused because?
The first vote we just took was to amend. Add the line, Lesher. To amend 328, correct?
Correct.
Okay, so now 328 is before us as amended. So this is the final vote. I thought someone said amendment. Maybe my ear didn't pick that up correctly. So you're voting on 328 as amended?
Correct.
Okay, yes.
Okay. Okay, are we good, Council? Okay, let's move on to Council discussion on these text amendments. Okay? So, the first, Madam Secretary, could you read the first applicant, please, in the record?
Application by Talbot Country Club, Inc., 6141 Country Club Drive, Easton, Maryland, to amend the Talbot County Code, Section 190-78, terms defined, to add a definition of the term "country club" in Section 190-48.3, to add a new subsection F, expansion of the uses and structures of a country club in the RC District.
Okay. Mr. Thomas?
Sure, so I can briefly explain the process here, because this is a citizen-initiated zoning text amendment. This is just a preliminary step tonight where the Council shall review the proposed amendment, and any member of the Council can determine that the subject matter of the amendment has comprehensive impacts to the general welfare of the county and can direct staff to assist in drafting the amendment, which I think in both cases we have drafted amendments. So, we'd just be reviewing those with the applicant. Or that the subject matter of the amendment is focused on a specific land use, zoning or other topic, and authorize the application to proceed, or alternatively determine that the amendment is inconsistent with the zoning code and the general policies of the Comprehensive Plan and not be processed. So, once that happens, if it gets a favorable determination, then it has to go to the Planning Commission for review and recommendation back to Council. At that point, Council decides whether to introduce the bill, the zoning text amendment bill, and then proceed.
And this creates this definition, the definition would apply only to the RC District. I presume that this is not a by right, that this is by special exception or something to that effect. In other words, you can't get it, anybody in the RC zone can't by right get a country club on their property?
No, I'm going to defer to, if Mr. Parker's here, speak more to the specifics of the, of the language.
Yeah, Mr. Parker, you want to come up?
Yeah. William Parker, representing Talbot Country Club. Currently under the ordinance-
Murray, could you sit in the chair and talk in that?
Certainly can.
I appreciate that, thank you.
Currently under the zoning ordinance, the table of land uses permits something called golf courses and country clubs, public or private. They are permitted in several zones, the AC zone, the, several other zones, the RR zone, for example, they're permitted uses. They are, neither are permitted in the RC zone. So, golf courses and country clubs in the county, we have two golf courses, Hog Neck, and we have the Links at Perry Cabin that are, I don't think you'd characterize those as country clubs, because they don't have the other usual amenities of a country club, such as a swimming pool, tennis courts, bocce courts, other activities. They're sort of strictly golf venues. And under the ordinance in terms, golf courses are defined. So, you have golf courses and country clubs listed as permitted uses, but only golf courses are a defined term. Country clubs are not a defined term. And country clubs include, as part of their overall operations and being, a golf course in usual situations. And so, as a result of the oversight in the definition section of the ordinance, you then fall to the fact that in the RC zone, golf courses and country clubs are non-conforming uses, are not permitted in the RC zone. And in order to expand or modify those uses, they have to go before the Board of Appeals, like other commercial, non-conforming uses. A few years ago, there was an amendment to the ordinance that restricted the expansion of in-play areas of golf courses. Didn't say anything about country clubs, because country clubs were never defined, even though they're permitted uses in several zones. And in the case of Talbot Country Club, it has been in continuous existence in this county for 112 years. And it is facing the need to expand its amenities for its membership. For example, Talbot Country Club has only two tennis courts, and in the last 10 years, something called pickleball has become the fastest-growing racket sport in the country. And Talbot Country Club has no place, no room, on its non-RC-zone lands to build a couple of pickleball courts. These are not big courts. You can fit two courts, if not two and a half courts, on one tennis court. So, what the club is having to do, it's having to temporarily re-line and put a different net up for pickleball, take it down, so then tennis players can come back. And it's just, the language of the ordinance is, I think, is having an unintended consequence on the operations of a longstanding, non-conforming use. So, the definition and the language that I've suggested will allow the country club to come before the Board of Appeals as other non-conforming commercial uses can, and ask to modify or expand those uses consistent with the protections and objection, or objectives of the RC zone. And that's the purpose of the amendment language.
Great, that's good.
So, Mr. Parker, this amendment will not have the effect of enabling other uses to call themselves country clubs to be established in the RC zone?
No, no.
This will not open that loophole in that direction?
It will only apply to those existing, non-conforming country clubs that were legal at the time of the adoption of the Critical Area Ordinance.
So, the Links at Perry Cabin, so I get, if they've removed their tennis courts and pool?
They did.
They did, okay. And then the clubhouse and the wedding venue, how would that?
I'm not specifically familiar with how that operates down there. But I know that the golf course is indeed a golf course. And I don't know that it functions as a country club in the sense that I don't believe they have a clubhouse, for example, dedicated to the golf operation, but I'm not sure about that.
Okay.
I mean, clearly Hog Neck doesn't have a pool or tennis courts. It is strictly a golf course.
And that makes sense. I'm just trying to think how this would affect another locate, like Perry Cabin, Links, and if private club would make more sense than country club and the terminology for it. So, and I guess, I'm trying to figure out how, by the change, by having this wording in there, how that would allow you to add pickleball courts?
Because the definition of a country club, keep in mind, under the current ordinance, both golf courses and country clubs are permitted uses in the table of uses in certain zones. Golf courses are defined in the ordinance, country clubs are not. I think we all have an idea what a golf course is, and it's defined in the ordinance as greens, fairways, sand traps, and other hazards and things like that that typically appear on a golf course. There is no definition of a country club. Definition that I propose includes all of the amenities that golf, that country clubs traditionally have, and that is a golf course, a clubhouse, racket sports venues, bocce courts now are in, you know, more than half of the country clubs nationwide, and other such amenities, structures and uses. So, I've adopted a, or suggested a definition of country club that mirrors what country clubs are today.
Did you take this, on this definition I'm looking at in blue, under Section 190-78 terms? Country club, land area structures that may contain golf course, recreation facilities, clubhouses, dining and/or banquet facilities, spa, fitness facilities, swimming pool, tennis, racket sports, racket courts. Another custom, Murray, incidental use and structures open to members and their guests. This language is all new language that you drafted?
Well, it's, would be new language to your ordinance.
I'm saying this-
It is not new language. I pirated it from other ordinances of counties in Maryland, as well as other states, and submitted it to Miguel and Brennan, and to Patrick. And they did a little wordsmithing on it, but generally, it's something that I plagiarized.
It's well-defined. I mean, I think you hit all the points on it. I'm just surprised that we never have defined country club, and so.
Okay. Okay, Council?
Brent, have you looked at this language, any questions about it? From your standpoint?
No, I don't have any questions about it, but I did want to say that we did take a look at this language, and it would make sense to add, at the very minimum, a definition of a country club, considering the fact that it is listed in the table of land uses, and it's a unique instance that we have a land use that's specifically identified within our table without actually having a specific definition attached to it as well. So, I think that there is important, and I mean, Mr. Parker had already given you the testimony that this would essentially allow them to further expand that use on a restricted property that they are today. With regards to your questions about the Links at Perry Cabin, we probably have to go back and assess their special exception granting that they previously had, because I'm not necessarily sure that they were granted a special exception for a country club or if it was just a golf course. But I can tell you today, based on what they've done, they've worked within the existing footprint and law coverage of what they have in order to provide the amenities that they do for the facility that they have. So, they actually haven't been able to expand their facility either within the RC. They've just been merely working within the footprint of what's already in the confines of the property.
To Mr. Leisher's question, Brent, I'm going to direct you to under Conforming Uses, Number F1, and it says, "Such expansion does not cause an increase in the impervious surface of the country club's RC-zone land use beyond 15%." And then it goes on, I'm going to stop there. So, to his point about not creating other entities into country clubs, is this saying that the existing entity must be already identified as a country club?
Yes, that's correct. So, I think Mr. Parker already addressed that with you by saying that this would only be applicable to country clubs that were already in effect or approved or existing prior to a zoning ordinance dating this language, should it be approved? If that makes sense. So, in other words, you would have already had to be given the distinction of a country club prior to this language becoming enacted for this to be applicable to the property. You could not apply to be a new country club in the RC and then further then expand that.
Is this language strong enough to say that? I mean, I think that it kind of gives to what his question is. I'm just wondering, is it strong enough to say what it is that we wanted to say?
I think we could further evaluate that. Personally, in my evaluation, I thought it was strong enough to say that, but if you'd like us to look into that further, we will. Obviously, if this moves forward, as Patrick stated, we would be taking this to the Planning Commission as well. We'd provide a very thorough staff report at that point in time.
Let me wait till, wait till the Planning Commission looks at it.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Okay.
Thank you.
Will you show hands, move this forward?
Is that, do we, are we taking action on this?
Do we need to do anything, do we need to show hands to move this forward?
It just, some, there needs to be a determination, either that the proposed amendment has comprehensive impacts to the general welfare of the county or that it is focused on a specific land use, zoning or other topic, and that staff is authorized to proceed with processing the amendment. And it says, any Council member can make that determination, but I think you all could.
I would make such determination as stated by the county attorney, that the staff be directed to proceed, that it go to the Planning Commission for their review, and they're submitted back to the Council for final vote.
Okay. Sounds good. Thank you, Mr. Parker.
Thank you all.
Okay. Next, Madam Secretary, I want to read the next text amendment, please.
Application by Ryan Showalter Esquire, MDSW 100 Northwest Street, Easton, Maryland, to amend the Talbot County Code, Sections 190-15, Critical Area Overlay District, CAO 190-31, Marine Uses, 190-33, Accessory Uses, and 190-78, Terms Defined Regarding Erosion Control Measures and Riparian Structures.
Okay. You want to talk, or do you want Ryan to come on up?
Yeah, I'll defer to Mr. Showalter to give an overview of the proposed amendment.
Mr. Showalter?
Thank you. Members of the Council, Ryan Showalter, 100 Northwest Street, Easton, Maryland. Hearing on behalf of the, the application that's before you tonight for consideration, this is the culmination of probably more than a year and a half's worth of effort to identify and resolve issues that have been uncovered through application of the county's current riparian structures, pier, bulkhead, shoreline erosion control provisions. So, this effort started with Mary Kay. It continued with Miguel and Brennan. And we've had a variety of different applications where circumstances have been identified that don't quite fit the county code, but warrant modifications or consideration to deal with issues. And principally, they relate to non-conforming piers and dealing with shore erosion control. So, there are a few other provisions in here where the county is far more restrictive than MDE and most other counties. You know, one, for example, is finger piers. And for those of you who are not familiar, finger pier is the narrow component of a pier, not more than three feet wide, that extends perpendicular generally to the pier structure and parallel to the slip. So, it provides access to the full length of the vessel that's in a boat slip. The State of Maryland and the Corps of Engineers permit finger piers to run the full length of the boat slip, so that you can, you can access a piling to tie off, you know, bowlines, you can access the full length of the boat for maintenance. Talbot County's regulations limit finger pier lengths to no more than 50% of the length of the slip. So, it gives you access to the back, to the stern, the back half or third of the boat, but not the rest of it. And so, we proposed a series of text amendments to the county planning staff. Initially, with Mary Kay's efforts, the planning staff identified some issues and discrepancies that they had worked on to be included. That first draft was submitted to both the Critical Area Commission and MDE's Title Wetlands staff for review and comment. They came back with some questions and comments, which I think were very constructive. The proposed amendments were refined to address their comments and questions and clarify a few points, and what we've submitted is sort of the consolidated effort. Happy to answer any particular questions that you might have.
Council? Mr. DeVilleo?
So, are we sending this over to Planning Commission to review?
Right, so again, the Planning Commission would receive this and then review and make recommendations back to Council, and then Council would decide whether they wish to actually introduce a bill to amend the zoning code to allow for this.
Okay, I'm comfortable with, I'll wait for their recommendation and ask them questions.
Mr. Showalter, can you explain the provision about conforming and legal non-conforming piers beyond the 150-foot length limitation? And the intended change here, what is the problem that we're getting at on this text amendment?
So, there are two general circumstances, and this may not be exclusive or exhaustive of all of them, but the two circumstances that often arise, one is question about adding, adding a boat slip, adding a mooring piling. We're doing something with a pier that's beyond 150 feet. The county has had varying interpretations about whether that could occur. You know, a pier that's constructed prior to the change in the law, that's 175 feet long, it is most appropriate to put a boat lift, or you know, a slip with mooring pilings, at the end of the pier for two reasons. The first is depth for access to vessels. And more recently, MDE and the Corps have been very focused on minimizing prop wash, minimizing shading of SAVs. And so, they want to see the docking activity occur over deeper water where there's less impact to SAVs. And there's been varying interpretations about whether you can add a slip a slip or a lift beyond the 150-foot limit. So the purpose here is to not permit it to expand. So this is not intended to allow you to put it at the end of the pier, effectively making the pier longer. But if the pier is non-conforming with respect to length, as long as you are inside of that non-conforming component, you're not making it more non-conforming, you could use the full length of the pier for those improvements. Another example deals with modification. So there are sometimes piers that have platform area that's larger than is allowed today, or there's an orientation that isn't ideal, and somebody wants to make a modification. And the current county code allows those piers to be replaced in kind, but not to be modified. And so, there are times where we have conflict between MDE and the Corps, who want to say, "Take this platform area and move it out of the shallows, move it out to the end of the pier, so that we have less shading of the SAV." The county says, "You can replace it in kind, but you can't move that non-conforming component." If the only thing that's non-conforming is length, you're not making it longer, you should be able to modify the pier to be more environmentally sensitive. But right now, the code doesn't permit that.
Okay. Thank you.
No additional questions at this time. I'll wait for the review from the planning commission.
Okay. Any other questions, discussions? Okay.
Mr. Clark, I would ask, as we did in the previous text amendment, that we moved this up to staff to make their reviews and send it over to the planning commission for their review, and submit back to council for final vote.
Okay. Sounds good.
Okay. Thank you, Ryan. Appreciate it.
All right, then. County manager?
Thank you. Ray, you want to come up? Council, under county manager report this evening, we have a request from the Department of Public Works to award bid number 2206, Talbot County Sanitary District, septic system connection to county sewer, three-year contract, Talbot County, Maryland, as you read in your packet, requesting council approval to award bid 2206 to CHT Excavating LLC and Eastcom LTD to install grinder pump systems and septic tank affluent pump step systems throughout the Talbot County Sanitary District. The Department of Public Works will negotiate best pricing and installation strategies for an actual project. And Ray is here to fill in the blanks for you. Ray, reading.
Counsel, again, we actually bid this project out back in April, and I think we had about four to five companies that picked up bid packages. Currently, we have two contractors that are working under this three-year agreement with the county, and the current contractors are Eastcom, as well as Duval. Unfortunately, Duval did not choose to, I guess, submit a bid this time. So we have CHT Excavating as the other bidder. Again, this is one of those where we've received funding through the state, primarily through the Bay Restoration Funds, and we're going to have a septic system upgraded with, let's say, a connection to the wastewater treatment plant. We have to go through this bid process, and then that way we have, let's say, a pre-qualified firm that can now do the installation of that work. And then it puts us in a position of basically pulling the proposals together from the contract that we've selected, either Eastcom or CHT. And then after we've done that, we work with the property owner, MDE, and the contractor to go ahead and make that sewer connection.
Any special questions?
Should I channel my Laura Price? Could you explain why you recommended the higher bidder?
Well, I think in this case, what we do have, these are both bidders, we received both bids. One bid, I guess, was from CHT, which is $20,000. The other bidder, which is Eastcom, is $14,500. And it was basically on the selection of those prices that we provided them. This was kind of like, how can I say it? This was kind of like a project where we're looking at, you know, this is what we need. There are some pricing that were a little higher, I think, with CHT versus Eastcom. However, there are going to be situations where, you know, job-specific, you know, we could see better pricing from CHT versus Eastcom, and vice versa. So it will be a negotiation process for both the bidders on this.
Excellent. I appreciate your confidence, and I stand by your side.
Okay.
Yeah. So, Mr. Clark, if you could just expand, it's unusual, of course, to award a bid to more than one bidder. And we're doing this because this is, this is a recurring sort of occurrence, and you was, this gives you the flexibility to award it to one or the other. You'll keep both of these firms busy presumably in the coming three years.
And typically, sometimes this can happen as well, is one contractor's busy, cannot get to the work, and so we have to go to the other contractor and secure a proposal to have them do that work. At the same time, what we're hoping to do, as we move forward with sewer extensions, is we potentially can bundle these. And instead of just giving them one property to connect, hopefully we can give them four or five properties to connect at one time in an effort to lower the overall prices.
Great. Thank you.
I'll make a motion that we award the bid number 2206.
Go up second.
Sure.
Okay. We've got a motion seconded to award 2206. Madam Secretary, could you call the vote, please?
Mr. Cowhan?
Aye.
Mr. DeVilleo?
Aye.
Mr. Leisher?
Aye.
Mr. Pack?
All right. Thank you, Ray. Good job.
Thank you, Ray. And under announcements, county council, I have two. County offices will be closed on Monday, June 20th, for Juneteenth, the Juneteenth holiday. And the second item is the State Highway Administration. It will be resurfacing Maryland Route 329, Rural Oak Road, between Tuesday, June 21st and Friday, July 15th. Work on Monday through Thursday, 7:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m., excluding holidays. This will create a bit of an imposition for people in that area, and we are working along with SHA to try to get the word out to the public so they can make appropriate plans. Other than that, that completes the county manager's report for this evening. Thank you.
Okay. Good job, Mr. Dan. Appreciate it. Okay, we're going to move on to a public comment. Jess, we've got anybody?
Nobody this evening.
Nobody this evening. And they only, nobody. Okay. All right, that's good. All right, now we've got council comments.
None this evening.
None?
Nothing.
Mr. Mike President?
I will, I will just offer my congratulations to the 57 graduates of St. Michael's Middle High School on May 31st, and the 278 graduates of Easton High School on June 3rd. They would have graduated June 2nd, but for a summer squall that was passing through.
Bottom line.
I was privileged to be able to attend the commencement for both of these, both of these groups of students. They, these students, what our school systems are doing today is truly amazing. You know, when I was going through high school, plenty dropped out, and not everybody who made it to the end did graduate. That simply isn't happening anymore. They really are not letting students fall between the cracks. These students are grad, and they are not lowering standards and doing it. These students are college or career-ready. We have many of them heading off to college this fall, including my own daughter. And many others are now grad, freshly graduated and already entering our workforce locally, where they are most needed, as we have seen. And we have a few who commendably are signing up to serve in the Armed Forces of the United States. So my congratulations to all of those graduates.
That's great. Mr. Pack, you're very quiet over there, you know? You okay over there?
Good. I just want to make a public plea, if I could, regarding, we have a big primary coming in January, I'm sorry, in July. And last I heard, not just here in Talbot County, but across the state, that we're running short on election judges and election officials. So I just want to make a plea to citizens out there, also to even some county employees who may want to take some time off to help out. They need, we need your help. We need your help. This is a big election coming in July. You have a governor's race, you have a comptroller, you have county council. So, a full slate. I'm sure there's going to be something for somebody out there to look at and decide on. So if you wouldn't mind, please, madam, sir, consider being an election judge or election official that could use your help. That's all. Thanks.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Pack.
I don't have a whole lot, other than me and Mr. Leisher were at the 100th anniversary of the Avalon the other night. That was pretty special for Talbot County and the town of Easton. So, I don't know, there was probably four or 500 people, at least two or 300 at the Avalon, and people were packing the streets. So it was, it really just showed you how special this community is. So I was proud to be a part of it, and appreciate it. So, other than that, you want to go ahead and-
Close the session?
The county council's next meeting will be held on Tuesday, June 28th, beginning at 6:00 p.m. The council will be convening an open session at 4:30 p.m. and then adjourning into closed session to discuss real estate, legal, and personnel matters, as listed on the statement for closing that meeting. Therefore, is there a motion to adjourn this meeting and reconvene, as noted?
Okay. We've got a motion seconded. Madam Secretary?
Mr. Cowhan?
Aye.
Mr. DeVilleo?
Aye.
Mr. Leisher?
Aye.
Mr. Pack?